I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Yes.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on September 4th, 2018, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Being none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, the only thing I have this evening is that the financial budget summary report for the month of August 2018 was distributed to you prior to the meeting for your information. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. We do not have any special recognitions this evening, so we'll move on to lobby visitation. Kay, is anyone registered for lobby visitation?
No, none tonight.
Okay, very good. Moving on to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I have a resolution naming the Bowling Green Ohio Veterans Memorial Building from the Committee of the Whole. And I'd like to take a moment to give a little background on why this exists. I had been doing, having discussions over the past few months with a local veteran, local historian, David Ridenour, and looking at what had been going on in the city park in reference to the building, going to be soon, soon to be razed and replaced. And we learned that, that American Legion Post 45 had leased that building from the city for 50 years, from 1929 until 1979, and used it as its post-headquarters. When the Legion vacated the building in 1979, the city of Bowling Green continued to honor the veterans by then naming it as the Veterans Memorial Building. That's the name that stood since. And it was my thought that we should take efforts to continue that tradition when the new building is built. Now, I fully understand and appreciate the efforts of the Park Board and our Parks Director in looking for some public-private collaboration. I think that's a great, I'm always in favor of public-private collaboration. I know there's an effort to try and find some sponsorship and naming rights moving forward, and I think we can find a way to make that work. But in the meantime, as that process is going on, and I know we'll hear more about the proposal first and moving forward, I think it's important to get this, this resolution on the books. I understand that as the efforts and work of the Park Board and our Parks Department in figuring out the best way to approach the naming rights issue may cause this to be tabled in the future. I think that's perfectly fine. But in any case, that's, that's the short history behind it. Everything that I've just explained to you is captured in the verbiage, in the resolution itself. And why...
Thank you, Greg.
I want to make a comment on this. I saw this a couple days ago, and it seems like the intent is to make sure that the, the name of the building is, is not clouded, or that the respect for veterans is not clouded by other, other words or names being added. And it got me to thinking about, we've also heard a little discussion about what kind of displays, or what kind of space would be made available inside the building. And this is just a general question, not for Greg or anybody in particular, maybe it's more of a notion. It seems we might want to distinguish between those who have served in combat zones, those who have been deployed to hostile regions. And so I'm just kind of wondering if displays inside the, the building should, or maybe already do reflect that, and I'm just not aware of that. So it's just something for folks to think about.
Mr. Chair, as Chair of, on behalf of the City Council, Parks and Recreation, I want to add something I feel is very important. I'm not opposed to naming it the Veterans Memorial Building, by the way. That's not why I'm making these comments. But it is, a lot of work is going, has gone into this building to make it something where we can have a return on our investment and use it for big events such as weddings, memorial services perhaps, large city meetings, large public meetings where the public could rent it themselves and hold, hold large meetings, large gatherings. And the interior is going to be of the nature that it would be suitable for a wedding or a memorial service and what have you. And I would just ask Council to please keep this in mind. Again, I want to emphasize, I am not opposed to naming it a memorial building, but I think that we have to be careful the way we outfit the interior and those things we put on display. A wedding not, may not be an appropriate place to have different types of weapons of self-defense or, you know, gunnery displayed. I hope we don't plan on putting a cannon in there. But we have to keep in mind that in order to reimburse the city for the cost of building such a large building, that we want to make it suitable for having ceremonies in there. So please, please keep that in mind as we go through this.
Thank you. Very good. Moving on with the introduction of new legislation. I have another resolution from the Committee of the Whole. Resolution declaring the intent of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio to adopt the federally approved Wood County Hazard Mitigation Plan as developed by the Wood County Emergency Management Agency. Mr. Gordon.
From the Community Improvement Committee, we have an ordinance amending and adoption, and adopting Section 30.101 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, establishing a Historic Preservation Commission. And we have an ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio to enter into a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement.
Thank you, Daniel. On to our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I really don't have an official report this evening, but I would like to take advantage of this opportunity, if I may, to call your attention to the fact that there is a, a person in this room who will be attending her last meeting of City Council in any official capacity, at least as President of the Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce, or the Executive Director. So Erlene Kilpatrick, I just want to call attention to your good work over the past 10 years. You've had a, just a wonderful working relationship with, with the city. You've been extraordinarily patient and gracious in your treatment of me. And you haven't permitted the city's ceremonial scissors to rest hardly a week without having a planned ribbon cutting there. But you've reached out to all of us, and you have a strong working partnership between the chamber and, and certainly this, the city, as you do with many other entities. And we appreciate that. I know I'm speaking also on behalf of the staff here because Lori Treader is a member of your, your board, Executive Committee of the Chamber. And so there is this constant daily, almost, working kind of relationship and collaboration. And so Erlene, I want to thank you very much for your good 10 years and all that you've done to help us in so many, many ways. And we wish you all the very best in whatever you and Claude decide to do. We hope you're not going to leave the community, of course. But that would, that would be wonderful if you would stay on here. So, but all the very, very best. And I know, I don't pretend to ever speak for members of City Council, so don't let me steal any of your, your words and so forth there. But I know you've all enjoyed working with Erlene and her board and all the many events that you have throughout the year, especially the one at the end of January each and every year. And that's been kind of the highlight of, of each year for all of us. So, and then your recognitions of people for their special achievements and what have you. So, thank you. Thank you very much. And, Mr. President, members of council? You might want to, do you want, would you like to speak? Well, you know, I have very little power around here, but you know, I would like to at least give you...
It is not scripted, but I was going to extend my heartfelt appreciation to city administration, all the departments that I've worked with over the years, the city council members as well. I've had the chance to see what goes on behind the scenes. And there's a lot of work that all of you do to make the city as what it is. And you, you care. That's what's so, so special. Really care. And I've gone to meetings of other chambers, of other downtown groups, and the camaraderie, the, the friendship, the true care just does not exist in some of our, the communities. So I just want to say, I'm trying to get through this without crying. I just want to say thank you and keep up the great work because, you know, all of you are what makes Bowling Green, Bowling Green. And it's been my pleasure to be a part of that. And thank you.
Thank you for those wonderful words, Erlene. And, Mr. President, members of council, unless you have questions of me, that really concludes my, my report.
Are there questions for Mayor Edwards? Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treader.
Well, Erlene, hopefully we'll have the opportunity to, to speak again and talk in glowing terms about all the wonderful things you've done. But just on a personal note, that it really has been a privilege to work with you first at downtown Bowling Green, back when we were doing the Heritage 2000 project. So it's been a long time ago. And of course, through your years at the Chamber, and you've done a wonderful job of guiding them and influencing them. And I echo the mayor's words that really, you've been a tremendous asset to this community. One quick update for council. Development Strategies, the company that is working on the Worcester Corridor Land Development Strategy, is in the second of four stages at this point. The consultant team has already evaluated market demand for various types of commercial and residential products, and is now working to identify catalyst projects, market strategies, and recommended land uses. This month, Development Strategies will also be conducting an online survey for BGSU students, faculty, and staff that will provide additional information about the demand for residential products. The third phase of the project will start in October and will involve scenario testing, cost estimates, pro forma development, site capacity analysis, and other efforts to provide more details on project feasibility. Among numerous other goals, one of the anticipated outcomes is for the planning commission and council to be able to align the final report from Development Strategies, their final outcomes, with land use and potentially zoning recommendations. This was one of the cap priorities that was recently identified by council. Development Strategies is scheduled to make a presentation to council in December. And so I will work with President Osbacher on a date and a time for you to hear from them. That completes my report, subject to your questions.
Are there questions for Lori? Great. Thank you for that update.
Thanks.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Are there questions for Heather? Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ali.
Good evening. Just a very, very quick report. Two things coming up this Friday, the 21st. The first is that the early bird, I guess, deadline for the 23rd Annual Wine and Cheese Social and Auction put on by the fantastic Bowling Green Parks and Recreation Foundation is this Friday. So tickets purchased by this Friday are $50 each. After this Friday or at the door, it goes up to 60, which is fine. It's a fundraiser. So, you know, just wait. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to share that. So, you know, that $10 that you save, you can come and, and bid on the silent auction and live auction, and wine poll, and raffle for a, an iWatch. So, some new things going on, but it should be a lot of fun. And we, again, this year, we do have beer, so it's not just wine. Parks and Rec, BG Beer Works is brewing Parks and Rec Red again for us. It'll be a blonde as well. You can tell which one I favor. So, but I just want to remind everyone, the proceeds from this year's Wine and Cheese are going to Ridge Park. And that is kind of the finishing project out there, is leveling and seeding that, that back area, that open play area. So, we look forward to completing that. So I'll give you some flyers, just to remind you if you've not gotten your tickets. And also this Friday, we are starting back again with some of the Friday Fun Nights at the Community Center. These are free. It's a family fun night. These are free with your pass, or you can pay the daily fee to get in. And this is giant board games. And it is from, I believe, six to eight. So, and that's just exactly what it sounds like, giant board games. So, and that is all that I have, unless you have questions of me.
Could I please add, Kristin, that the wine poll will involve an opportunity to get a $100 bottle of wine amongst those that are being offered through the wine poll. But we do have a fabulous $100 bottle.
Okay. And there may be some other more expensive ones.
There may be some other very expensive ones. I'm just going to assure you, there's one at least.
Boons Farm as well. That's, that's part of the, part of the allure. But you do get something for that $20. So, kind of a new fun thing.
Boons Farm was good in its day.
Yes. I'll stop talking now. Yes.
There's a $100 bottle of Boons Farm?
This is recorded.
It's the original bottle.
Any other questions?
Are there any other questions for Kristin? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Okay. Let's admit, you had Boons Farm when you turned 18 too, probably, didn't you? So this is confession. We deserve you.
Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Last meeting, I gave you an update about Mike Fields getting an award at the AWWA Conference. And I was not aware, but at the same conference, the Ohio Water Environment Association of OWEA, they held a joint conference with AWWA. They do that occasionally. So the wastewater guys got together with the drinking water guys, and they had their conferences.
It sounds like Boons Farm.
I don't know nothing about that. But, so Mike Fields got an award from AWWA. But I also learned after that conference happened and after council last meeting, that Doug Clark, our wastewater superintendent, he got an award from OWEA. He received the JW Elms Award, which is given to a person that has an administrative or supervisory position, emphasizes participation in OWEA conferences and activities, civic affairs, and then also leadership in the wastewater treatment processes, wherever that person may be. So, again, just try to emphasize that, you know, Mike Fields got an award, Doug Clark got an award. We have some really good people at the top level of management within the divisions. And just wanted to give Doug some recognition there as well. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Questions for Mr. O'Connell.
Two questions. One is, why are the BPU meetings not this fun?
Well, I am an engineer, so I shouldn't be trying.
The second question is real. Would you expect that we'd be sending any of our electric utility people to the Carolinas?
Yeah, we do have, it was a three-man crew that was volunteered, that they were ready to go. Did talk with Jon Stewart, and we believe we could spare them. I don't believe they've been called yet. We put our name in the hat to say we were available to go if there was, there was a call. And we have, we've assisted in other places. We went to Florida for, for a few, for a week or so, helped out with a few people down there, went to New York several months ago. So we have gone to other places. So, I think we do have a small crew that could, could go and help out. A lot of times, the crews will get together from different AMP municipalities or different AMP members that are in the general area, and they'll kind of caravan down together. So they'll, they'll stay together on the trip. Probably take them a day or two to get down there. But they're, I think right now, they're waiting to see where they're going to get called to and where they're needed at this point. So, but I can provide, provide an update for you on that next meeting.
Thanks.
Sure, no problem.
Thanks, Brian. Please pass on our congratulations to Doug and our appreciation for all of his good work.
Sure, no problem. We'll do so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Bookworks Director, Mr. Kraft. Other questions for Mr. Kraft? Thank you. That completes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Ms. Zanfordino.
This evening, we had a joint mission with, joint mission, a joint committee meeting with the Bicycle Safety Commission. That group is doing fantastic work, and we met with them in, in May and talked about some of the things that the commission has been doing. Tonight, we reconvened to talk about the, the cap plan and the aspects that speak to bike lanes and bike-related matters. So I think we had a good meeting. We came away with a few action steps to proceed with. And despite having myself and Steve Langendorf in the room, we did the meeting in 45 minutes. Greg or Daniel, if you have anything to add?
Just, you know, just, it's my understanding that, so on our end, we're supposed to, we're going to be moving forward with 1F.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And then the Bicycle Safety Commission is going to explore, was it 5D?
5D, yes.
Yeah.
These are two cap recommendations, of course.
Yeah. And 1F being exploring grant opportunities for bicycle infrastructure on Court Street, and 5D to explore, I might forget all the street names, but it was College, Clough, Scott Hamilton, and another, to look for possible bicycle infrastructure improvements.
Great. Thanks, Daniel.
I hate to jump in prematurely on your ongoing efforts with the commission, but
I keep seeing Court Street coming up again. And I have some reservations, and I've known other issues. I've waited too long to express my reservations. I think Court Street might be good. I think, since the mayor explained that the university wants to move ahead and is interested in an esplanade, which would be a great and wonderful thing, it might make Court Street much more significant of a place for people to travel through. I just don't think we have developed a good A to B there. If you say A is the university, you can get a lot of people to that point. Where are they going to go from downtown? Where are they going to go from Prospect Street? So, and not that that's an insurmountable problem, but we just have to think, where is the ultimate destination going to be for these bicyclists, and how are we going to get them there? So, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Bruce.
Additional council committee reports. Great. John, thank you for that update. I appreciate it. Moving on to the reading of legislation. Kay, please.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3712 for first reading. Resolution naming the Bowling Green, Ohio Veterans Memorial Building. Resolution number 3713 for first reading. Resolution declaring the intent of the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio to adopt the federally approved Wood County Hazard Mitigation Plan as developed by the Wood County Emergency Management as the agency. Ordinance number 8714 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 30.101 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, establishing a Historic Preservation Commission. Ordinance number 8715 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio to enter into a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement. Legislation for second reading. Resolution number 3711 for second reading. Resolution amending and adopting changes to the procurement manual for the BG Transit Program. Ordinance number 8711 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into an agreement with Anixter Power Solutions for the purchase of electric meters. Ordinance number 8712 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for engineering services related to aeration and biosolids improvements at the water pollution control facility. Ordinance number 8713 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept a utility easement from Napoleon Landings LLC. Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3707 for third reading. Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance, our resolution 3707.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. The motion passes. Resolution 3707 is adopted.
Resolution number 3709 for third reading. Resolution amending the preamble of the Charter of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to adopt resolution 3709.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Just for folks who, who don't know, this resolution seeks to amend the preamble of our city charter to follow up on the recommendations of a committee that reviewed the city charter recently and recommended that we add a section or a clause in there to incorporate our principles of nondiscrimination in Bowling Green. Specifically, the resolution amends the preamble to say that we are determined to be a welcoming and inclusive community with adherence to practices of nondiscrimination as established by law. I think this is very consistent with the work that we've done over the past few years, passing different pieces of legislation to commit Bowling Green to standing with marginalized communities and make sure that Bowling Green works for everybody in the city. So I certainly will be supporting it. I want to thank John and Bill in particular for the work that we did together on, in our Community Improvement Committee meetings. We had a good spirited discussion, and I think we arrived at some good compromise language.
I want to say that I appreciate the language that you put together. I know you kind of fought it out a little bit and trying to get it right, and I think that was commendable. I've been trying to see if I could find a way that, in my mind, it fit in the charter. And I still don't think that it is the right place for it. It's the right words, it's the wrong place, so I probably will not support it.
Are there additional discussion?
Mr. President, I fully understand Bruce's position. I had to wrestle with it, well, as we all did. In fact, you may recall the, the vote to pursue this or not passed by a four to three vote. And the position to, to make an attempt at trying to put some wording together is commendable, and also very defensible to say this just isn't the place for it. So I fully respect everybody's position on whether to proceed or not. And I also want to commend the committee. If you had the, the pleasure of being at our committee meetings, you would see that it is, it was a microcosm of the way that perhaps committee meetings ought to be held, not just at this level, but at the national stage. We had, as was said, spirited discussion, but it was very respectful. It brought out the, the different nuances with the, the different approaches. And to see Daniel act in the capacity as chair and steer this through was great. To see his thoughtful wording was great. I'll humbly add, I had some pretty thoughtful wording as well. And, and then also, not to leave John out, John, in the meeting, saw that we had, you know, different approaches and seized the opportunity to, in a sense, blend them. And so I was very, very proud of the way that the committee handled it. Not as proud about the, the result. It obviously wasn't my perfect wording, but it was a good, a good compromise. And, and I still, I, I hesitate to admit this to the rest of council, but I've come to the determination that sometimes, and, and don't use this against... but I've come to the determination that sometimes, and don't use this against me in the future, sometimes I overanalyze things. I deserve that. And so, I was really wrestling with the term welcoming because it means different things to different people. And with my analytic background, it's very important to have precise wording. And, you know, I was going door to door on Saturday, and there were welcome mats. And one said welcome, well, actually, a lot said welcome. One said welcome friends, which I guess, I'm saying this in jest, would be not as inclusive. But, and then one really threw me, was me lambda cowie. And then I realized it was just the reflection on the screen door glass of welcome. But my point is that when people put a welcome mat out, they're not saying, first of all, I'm going to preempt Bruce on this, it's only welcome mat. No, it's a welcome mat, not welcome hat. Anyway, they put that out, people don't agonize for hours and hours on, well, should I have a welcome mat? Because it says welcome. What do I actually mean by welcome? It's a welcome mat. And so, for me, there's been a little bit of an evolution in that, yes, it's welcoming. We welcome people. Can you imagine this community not welcoming somebody? If somebody is intelligent enough to want to live in Bowling Green, we're not going to turn them away. Of course, we're a welcoming community. And so, that's one of the phrases, one of the terms that we want to identify Bowling Green with. And we want to actually, there is an advantage that we don't have a set definition of welcome. So, it means different things to different people. But I think we can all agree that we would welcome people into the community. So, maybe this is another example of my overanalyzing, but I am pleased with the wording. I had several criteria. I didn't want it to detract from the purpose of the preamble. It doesn't. I didn't want it to be overly wordy. It's a little wordy, but not overly wordy. And if we approach the welcoming as, yes, we welcome people, then this is acceptable and goes with the type of community we want Bowling Green to be.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion?
Mr. President, first of all, I'd like to say I will vote for this preamble, but I would like to say also that while I appreciate, and I really do appreciate that the discussion happened, I think that if, as a legislative body, if we really care about, and I know we do, the well-being of our citizens, it's the codified ordinance of the city of Bowling Green that we, but, and I think that's what we need to keep our eye on moving forward. However, I will vote.
Thank you. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
No.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
I want to thank Bill Harold for his explanation. I think that was very thoughtful. Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3709 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8708 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for repairs to the solids handling and maintenance building at the water pollution control facility.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8708.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8708 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8709 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to execute a real estate purchase agreement for approximately 1.57 acres of land near 315 and 325 North Grove Street.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8709.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8709 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8710 for third reading, ordinance amending and adopting chapter 98 of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets, sidewalks, and rights of way management.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8710.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8710 is adopted.
Ordinance Number 8705 comes off the table automatically.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt Ordinance 8705.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8705 is adopted. That completes the items on your agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.